Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting for our trustees and the Alabama Community College System Board of the Board. My welcome to the presence here. Your honor, to have you here. We appreciate your interest in the work of the system. A great deal of time has gone in to this agenda and the initiatives that are being made by the presidents of staff throughout the state of the transfer of this staff. And we thank you for your interest. At this time, I'd like to recognize Reverend Daniel Atkins to give our invitation. Reverend Atkins is a senior pastor of Holy Road Baptist Church. He also teaches Bible in Eastwood, Christians. Reverend Atkins.
Thank you very much for allowing me to be here today. Just understanding the importance of your work is just awesome as I was reading about what all you guys do and how appreciative I am. And, you know, as I was thinking about this, you know, growing up in the state of Alabama and attending two universities here in our state, I had a bad attitude about education as a kid. Nobody really likes all the homework until I read Proverbs, Chapter 25. And in that verse two, Solomon says something that changed my whole perspective, the way that I now, as a parent, try and communicate with my children and my students in our church. And in Proverbs, Chapter 25, verse two, Solomon, the wisest man who ever lived, by the way, said this. He said, "It is the glory of God to conceal things, but it is the glory of kings to search things out." When I understood that, that this is a world that God has created, the sciences, math, he's orchestrated all of history, and it is not that we are necessarily inventing things, but we are simply discovering what God has placed in his creation and how he has revealed himself. It gave me a whole new perspective on what it means to learn and what it means to live out what God has created me to be. And so, it helped me also to understand the why, of why I learn. And so, it's not just facts and information that we pass upon, but it is God revealing himself through his creation and how he has orchestrated all things. Let me pray first. Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today, God, to stand before this wonderful group of people who are in leadership and make decisions, who shape learning. Father, the weight of their responsibility is large, God, because the next generation of leaders is coming through schools and community colleges of our state. Lord, I pray for wisdom today. God, this is something that Jesus himself prayed for, that Solomon prayed for. And so, Lord, if they needed it, we need it. Lord, we need your wisdom, not our own, as your word tells us in Proverbs, to trust in the Lord with all our heart and not to lean on our own understanding. And so, God, I pray for this Lord today and all those who are involved in making decisions. Father, the presidents and faculty of the community colleges here in our state, Father, I pray that you would again just give them a spirit of understanding and wisdom. Lord, lead them, direct them. Father, that everything that they do, Lord, would bring glory and honor to your name. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'll adjourn. Motion, Mr. Davis, or second, Mr. Smith. Need discussion? Seeing that the vote is in favor, approving the agenda. Do you want to vote? The agenda is approved. Item five, approval of minutes, September 11, 2019 meeting. Board members will proceed to the chair in advance. This time, I'll adjourn. Motion, Mr. Brown, second. Second, Mr. Mackenout. No discussion. Seeing that the votes are in favor, approving the minutes, September 11, 2019 meeting, signed by by Rayson Van. Do you want to vote? The minutes are approved. Item six, section six, vote. The motion is adjourned. Section seven, student affairs, self-education facilities, fiscal information technology, workforce development. Item seven, page one, authorization for negotiations with the state, signed by Rayson Van. The state, the college, the session last month. This time, I'll adjourn. Motion, Mr. Woods, second, Mr. Davis. Need discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just say again, to have the opportunity to visit this project in the middle of the year, to sit by three opportunities for the college to sign about the project.
Seeing that the votes are in favor, approving the authorization for negotiations with the state, the state, signed by Rayson Van. Do you want to vote? Motion here. Item seven, page two, allocation of 1920 industry certification initiative funds for the ACCS. This time, I'll adjourn. Motion, Mr. Smith, second. Second, Mr. Woods. Need discussion? Seeing that the votes are in favor, approving the allocation for 1920 industry certification initiative funds for the Alabama Community College System, signed by Rayson Van. Do you want to vote? Motion here. Item seven, page three, allocation of 1920 industry certification initiative funds for career coach program for the Alabama Community College System. This time, I'll adjourn. Motion, Mr. Davis, second, Mr. Brown. Need discussion?
I would like to see this.
Need further discussion? Seeing that the votes are in favor, approving the 1920 certification initiative funds for career coach program, signed by Rayson Van. Do you want to vote? Motion here. Item seven, page four, purchase real property requested by Southern Union State. This time, the work session. Mr. Ryan, do you have anything else to add? We've covered contingencies, I think.
Nothing other than that, the board members will find in their folders, two letters, the college has received, like a plating vision. The first letter addresses zoning issue and gives a favorable forecast to the rezoning property to more institutional use. The second letter, also from the plating vision, addresses the right of way and the location of that right of way. The city is there, is prepared to attend to the city council in that location that place, once the college files its application, the application process. This time, I'll adjourn. Motion, request to purchase real property by Southern Union State. Mr. Woods, second. Need discussion?
Seeing that the votes are in favor, approving the purchase of real property by Southern Union State, the state, community college, signed by Rayson Van. Do you want to vote? Here. Item eight, five, request of placement of main shop at Missland's small project. This time, the state.
The board, Mr. Thompson, Chancellor Baker, through his boards, over this year, we had fire the main shop at Southern Union State, the Black Acres. Goodness, there's no one who's injured in a fire. Bad news is the building itself was torn off. So, this project, with this actual request authorization, proceed with demolition of the main structure and replace the other structure. Included with this project are four miscellaneous small projects, those include welding system manifold, storage building, associated with welding program, some concrete park and truck ride range, and also sewer line extension for the electric units. I'm therefore, this project will be funded for accommodation with that insurance proceeds and Southern Union State. You see the location of the welding shop versus in the black box to the top right there on the backside of the units. The total cost of this project, we just paid the $1.34 million, $1.4 million of insurance for that, so the insurance proceeds. If we're looking for this, let's start maybe, this may have been worked on approximately nine months. I would point out that the reason the insurance payout is that the lower the cost of product as we're going back to different style building. The old building was completely metal building, we're going back to that new building, it was plated with senior walls, which should be much more refined. I would point out that I included in the small products, the overall large project bid, Southern Union State, the same price of $136,000 versus the previous project. Can you explain what's the transaction?
Third point, please, the addition of this. Do you have a code of conduct? Is this a right to this? Direct the question. Motion, Mr. Smith, second. Second, Mr. Brown. Need discussion?
Also, just trying to do that, any of the alternatives, depending on what the student suggests, how to approach. Now, if you definitely have opportunities, it's a practice, it's a fight.
Need further discussion? Seeing that the votes are in favor, approving the main shop replacement, miscellaneous projects proposed to Southern Union State, the union college, signed by Rayson Van. Do you want to vote? Motion here. Section eight, safety, 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 safety. Page, page one, participation for certain naming opportunities, I guess, that community college. They have participation for work session last month, and this is, this time, I'll adjourn. Mr. Woods, second. Story. Need discussion? Seeing that the votes are in favor, approving the solicitation facility naming opportunities, the state, community college, state, by Rayson Van. Do you want to vote? Motion here. Item eight, page two, we wish to recognize men's and women's basketball coaches, John Kitchens, Sneed State Community College President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chancellor, members of the board. It is a delight to be here today and recognize an incredible individual. On a personal note, one of the first folks in Boaz to come by and introduce themselves when I settled in as president, and I think John, within the first week, was Coach Kitchens, and he had lots of advice on how we need to improve the athletics part, but he did not volunteer to come back to coach. I think that may be because his wife wasn't real keen on that idea. But we're delighted to have him here, and it's my honor to read this resolution recognizing him, so that we can take formal action, and then we'll ask Coach Kitchens to make a few comments. Just as a side note, his grandson is one of our representatives, and Wes Kitchen, we thank you very much for everything you're doing, we'll let you introduce your family to them. A resolution recognizing retired Sneed State Community College men's and women's basketball coach, John Kitchens. Whereas, Mr. John Thomas Kitchens, retired, served as head coach for over a thousand high school and college games. And whereas, he is a native of Marshall County, born in Douglas, Alabama, a graduate of Trinity High School in Morgan County and Florence State College. And whereas, Coach Kitchens started his forty-plus-year coaching career at Carlisle Park in Gunnersville in 1959. And whereas, his first high school coaching assignment was at Eva High School, where they were county runner-up to Decatur in 1961, and his teams at Eva achieved a cumulative one-loss record of thirty wins and twenty-four losses. And whereas, Coach Kitchens, prior to arriving at Sneed State Community College, compiled a 159 and 36 record in seven seasons with the DAR High School Patriots, and won the 1965 Class 1A state championship, as well as four county championships in a row, 1965, 1966, 1967, and 1968. And whereas, Coach Kitchens served at Northwest Junior College. And whereas, Coach Kitchens served at Sneed State Community College from 1970 to 2000. And whereas, Coach Kitchens, Sneed State Community College Parsons Men's team were Northern Division champs in 1970. And whereas, Coach Kitchens coached the Lady Parsons Women's Basketball at Sneed State from 1986 to 2000, winning three state championships, including seventh and twelfth-place finishes in the nation. And whereas, he was named Coach of the Year three times in women's basketball. And whereas, from 1970 to 1988, the Parsons Men's teams compiled 201 wins, 161 losses. And whereas, Kitchens was named Alabama Junior College Conference Coach of the Year in 1980. And whereas, Coach Kitchens is a member of the Marshall County Sports Hall of Fame, class of 2002, the Morgan County Sports Hall of Fame, class of 2002, I mean, 10. And whereas, Coach Kitchens, a class of 2001 Alabama Junior College Athletic Hall of Fame coach, won a total of 640 games over the course of his career. And whereas, Coach Kitchens' legacy lives on today through the notable careers of former players like Coach Tanya Hinton-Littleton, who coached Boad varsity girls for many years, won a Class 5A state championship in 2001, finished runner-up in 2002. And Shelley Carter, who played for Coach Kitchens from 1986 to 1987, led Sneed to the 1987 AJCC State Championship, seventh-place finish in the national tournament, and had a successful career at Jacksonville State University. And whereas, Coach Kitchens continues to be a strong supporter of Sneed State Community Arts and Basketball, attending games regularly, cheering robustly, and whereas, his dedication to excellence in service to education and athletics is evident in the lives of his children and grandchildren. Now, therefore, the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees has hereby recognized his lifetime achievements and contributions through authorizing the naming of the basketball court of the Sneed State Community College Wallace Punktet Gymnasium as the John Kitchens Court. Adopted by the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees this day. We have to make.
Mr. Chairman, as Coach Kitchens is the opponent of all four of those candidates, I make the motion. Second, I'm Mr. Woods. Need discussion? Seeing that the votes are in favor, approving this progress, and we've seen by Rayson Van. Do you want to vote? Approving the minutes. Parodyism. Chancellor Baker, Board of Trustees, Dr. K, my grandson Wes. This is an honor that I've never dreamed it would occur in my lifetime. You don't know how proud I am of it. I'm a great supporter of the junior college system. I'd like to bring one guy that played for me before you all today. Name was Roy Walker. Roy came from the suburb of York, Alabama. When I say suburb, I don't mean. Roy didn't have a great opportunity growing up. But I got a call from his high school coach, and I went down, and he seemed like the type of person I wanted, and so we brought him to Sneed, and he had an ambition that he wanted to be a Division One basketball player. We tried our best to hit him with that call, and he wound up going to Willandie College in one of the Carolinas, and as a Division One basketball player. But here's the key, Roy came to us very unprepared for college. But he received that preparation at Sneed State Community College, where there was a specialty that saw the worth in him and took the time to hit him through the street. Now, Roy left there and went to, had a bachelor degree and went to Cleveland, Ohio, working with a civil aid dealership up there. But right now, Roy is half owner in that civil aid dealership, which I'm very proud of, that young man. We have others, but for this honor, I'm just grateful to have my name put in with Emmett Punktet and Laurel Lee Wallace on the same facility. It means a whole lot to me. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, just thank you again to the board. I've introduced my family, and we've got my grandmother sitting here on the front row, Sue Kitchens. We've been married years of marriage. And then, my Aunt Nan is on the front row, my Dad Brad, my mother Jan, and then my Uncle Lance. And I also want to say something, today is actually granddad's eighty-third birthday, so. Thank you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Coach Kitchens. Happy birthday to you.
First, thank you for being here and having with us, and thank you for the legacy that you've left, and so many other people that made great contributions to this system, get it where it is today. Thank you so much for your contributions and now your family. Item eight, page two, the three grounds, its naming of the Black Box Theater near state, near private state, community. This was on the work session last month, but this time, I'll adjourn. Motion, Mr. Mitchell, second. Mr. Woods, need discussion? Seeing that the votes are in favor, approving the naming of the Black Box Theater near private state, community college, signed by Rayson Van. Do you want to vote? Motion here. Section nine, first lady.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Charlene Finkelstein with the Human Resources Department, and I'd like to briefly introduce one new addition to our office staff, Ms. Courtney Griffin. Would you stand, please? Courtney joined us recently as the data analyst for research grants and development. She has almost fifteen years' experience in higher education in the areas of enrollment and data analytics. She served as Director of Institutional Research and the Executive Director of Enrollment at Tuskegee University. She was the Assistant Vice President of Enrollment at Alabama State University. Most recently, she served as the International Student Enrollment Director at Auburn University. So, welcome, Courtney.
Thank you. Say, and Chancellor, the votes. Of course, the last couple months, we all.
Mr. Chairman, Chancellor, Board, good morning. And thank you for this opportunity to provide this brief overview of the Division of Student Success. As the Chancellor has said, we do have what has been considered a new unit. We've been in the business of student success for a while. Right now, we are actually putting a deliberate focus on student success through the Division of Student Success, which actually exists to provide that system-wide leadership, coordination, and support for all of our student success programs and activities that occur within our colleges. Our division seeks to identify, but not only to identify, also to implement those innovative approaches and best practices to improve overall outcomes in enrollment management, in student retention, graduation, retention, in short, all things student success. So, you may ask, what does all of this really mean? What do these words really mean? Well, I can sum it up simply to say, we are laser-focused on the student experience. When we look at and we take seriously and intentionally all things student, then it's very easy to focus on the student experience, and we must be laser-focused there. That's the entire mission and goal of this Division of Student Success. We do believe that student success is largely dependent on the experience a student has, both inside and outside of the classroom. There is no one unit or division or person that actually owns student success. It's about what we do all day, every day, from the time we have the first contact with that student, throughout his or her matriculation at our colleges, onward through graduation, and even as that student enters the world of work, there's support we have to provide there also. So, again, it is all about that student experience for us. Within the Division of Student Success, we actually have several major components. Some of these focus on the more, the traditional thought of student services and what is, what falls organizationally under any Division of Student Services, whether at our colleges or here at our system offices, system office. We actually put a more focused approach and an intentional approach to being a resource for our colleges in each of these divisions, primarily strategic enrollment management. And there, strategic is the definitive word. Again, we want to make sure that we are planning, planning and purposeful in our efforts to reach our students through recruiting, to get them onboarded properly through our orientation or freshman academy-type programs, to make sure that we provide the services students need in order, that we enhance and grow our retention and our persistence numbers, and then again, on through graduation. We see another major component to us reaching our goals as academic advising and counseling services. Many of our colleges have great academic advising and counseling services programs. So, what we want to do is help to enhance those and to spread that kind of fire through, throughout the. through, throughout the entire system. Certainly, financial aid and veterans affairs is a major area of focus for us as we know that a large percentage of the students enrolled in our colleges rely heavily on financial aid and veterans affairs and WIOA and all of those forms of financial assistance. So we must be there to assist our colleges and to provide whatever resource is necessary to help them better help their students. Dual enrollment that actually goes across all of the divisions to ensure that we are managing that program properly, that we're getting students enrolled, and that we can help those students through the support systems that are provided so that hopefully they will matriculate at our colleges even after graduation from high school. Then certainly, career and college transfer services, student life and engagement, which is a major part of the overall student success factor here. When students are engaged in the entire college experience, they're more likely to persist than to graduate. So we feel that we need to, in our entire system, put a deeper focus on that student life and that student engagement piece. And all of this goes back to student services staff development, professional development and training, so that our student services staff are well-equipped to do what needs to be done to help our students. What I really look at, what we look at, is actually the building of a college or a system of colleges that's actually designed for student success. Usually when I'm talking to the individual colleges or student services or anyone, we look at this and we start talking about, how do we build what we need to have in order for our colleges to be successful, which flows to student success, community success, workforce success. We do believe that we have to have those foundational principles intact first. So if you look at the building of a house, when we get those foundational pieces in place, the leadership, the strategies that are designed to put the roof on the house, we start there. When we get all of those in place, then those four pillars, pillars become even more important and real for us in our colleges. We have to look at high-impact teaching and learning strategies in our classrooms. We have to look at comprehensive student support services in our colleges and throughout our system. We have to look at student-focused operations and practices and policies. And then we have to look at those external partnerships that help us to better serve our students. When we get these four pillars right within our entire Alabama Community College system, then we will improve our student success outcomes. We will improve what we're doing to support a better way of life for our students, increased work opportunities for our students, and our state at large. So again, just briefly, who are we? We are a division that's laser-focused on the student experience. We are very thankful for our presidents and our colleges who have allowed us to come in and to begin these conversations, to see how they can help us, help our system. And we look forward to much more to come. We are building our division. You all met on last month, the newest addition to our Student Success Division, Mr. Olivier Charles. So with him joining the team that we already have and with others to come on board, we look for great things out of the Division of Student Success for our colleges, our system, and our state as a whole. That was brief. Have much more, but I think that's brief. You all will hear, hear a bit more later. Are there any questions or comments you all would have? We actually started looking at some Noel Leavitts. If you're familiar with Noel Leavitts, with enrollment management and student success metrics. So there's a gambit that we actually look at from retention rates, enrollment, and persistence rates with students. We actually even look at students who have gone from developmental courses into college-level courses as a major indicator of persistence and success. We look at the engagement levels, the kinds of activities, and the numbers of activities that our colleges have on campuses, whether it be through clubs, organizations, Phi Theta Kappa, All Alabama participants. Then we also look as an end product, the number of students or the percentage of students who are transferring either to four-year colleges and universities or those who enter the workforce. Our career services offices at most of our colleges actually are really entrenched in the data related to where our students are going to work, if they're going to work in areas related to the programs studied that they completed at our colleges. So there's actually a wide range of metrics that we look at in order to create overall student success.
Those metrics come through, they come through the ERP system? Would you be able to get those from colleges or how does that get through?
Yes, we are able to and will be able to even in a better way gather that data through the ERP system. That data is actually entered at the college level. So quite often, the colleges have a more intense level of definition than even we get. You know, sometimes we'll call and we look at what that percentage is that we just pull out of the system. But in conversations with the college, they will actually extract down to two or three levels below to really show us what the data indicates. Demographics related to age of students or the number of students wanting to a particular program or study, any of those kinds of items, we will be able to pull from our ERP system. Any questions? Well, we just want our colleges to know that the Division of Student Success stands ready to assist you in any way possible. All you have to do is call us. We engage with colleges on a regular basis with everything from questions about dual enrollment, entitlement investigation, or nursing concerns, all the way to doing in-house workshops with regard to enrollment management and how to better serve our students. So for those of you that have allowed us on your campuses, invited us to come, thank you so much, and we look forward to our continued work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Baker, Chairman Thompson, and Board of Trustees. We have the opportunity to write on ATN. I will go back a little bit in history. In 2016, all the manufacturing extension partnerships in the country had recompeted. And that's where we received our federal funds. So Alabama Technology Network, we went into about a nine-month process of going through the MEB process. We were successful and we won that award for five years. That award is $8.9 million through a five-year period. It requires a one-to-one match. So we took the mindset that our MEB is really an $18 million prize. So that's kind of been our focus. And actually, our focus has kind of been also thinking about, what do we fit in as an organization in Alabama in terms of clients? Community college system, MEB. We're right in the middle of that triangle. And we decided that 100% of our effort has got to satisfy the top part of that tribe of our clients. There are going to be times and things that we'll do for those clients. It's going to be beneficial for the community college system as well. That's a win-win. And there's going to be times when it's beneficial for the clients, the community college system, and MEB. That's a win-win-win. So we like it when we have win-win-wins. So here we are, we won the award in 2016 for five years. Each year, we have a panel review or not a panel review, a review by MEB. Year three, which was this year, we had a peer panel review. We were reviewed by our peers, basically Oklahoma, Idaho, and Nevada. And MEB took a look at our program. They evaluated it on seven different criterias. Performance measurement and management, center strength and challenges, organizational structure and management, market understanding, business model, financial viability, and our national network citizenry. I'm proud to say we had a duly review. They actually recognized our performance management, management, our center strength and challenges, our business model, and our financial viability. All four of those got recognized as opportunities for ATN to share with other MEBs across the country of what we're doing. And so we've had success there. And so we, you know, significant improvement. Our staff has been committed. We're adapting that mindset and the work that they put in. Since quarter one of 2015, I shared with the Chancellor with them over a big offer for the client recording impacts.
I'd like to be a deal breaker. How was, uh, attended that? Couple weeks ago. Someone manufacturing some of our organization. They've been sent there, employees have been auditioned.
Just as a matter of information, yeah, approximately.
Fifty-one employees.
And you have a number of employees that have different backgrounds?
We, so our field staff are typically engineered to come from industry colleagues. They've got over 600 years of local industry experience. And I know that this last year, they had 560 years of local industry experience. So adding to that, I believe we've now reached 600 years. And they come from various different industries. We've got textile, we have steel mill, we have chemical, we have electrical, varying skill sets. We divide our skill sets up into teams. Industrial maintenance and technology, that can handle electrical, engineer backgrounds. Tendence improvement, looking lean and quality systems. And then environmental health and safety. And also just added a gun for hygiene to that team. Just kind of a new skill set for us. Most of our folks have specialties in OSHA and those type things. But this particular person had very deep experience in natural hygiene. And then we're beginning to do, and see them, and they'll be sure management.
These things all of us that constantly working with industry businesses. Purpose, if they'll improve what they're creating or designing, say. Just, it kind of goes, we're not careful, we don't notice it. They have a significant.
Just finishing up our, our budget numbers in 2019. And we have almost 26,000 and hours that were dedicated to the project.
Good morning, Chairman Thompson, fellow members of the board, Chancellor Baker. Thank you for allowing me to give you a very brief update on the commission that was created through SNEAD Point Resolution 71 sponsored by Javelin. Which created the Alabama Commission on Artificial Intelligence and Associated Technologies. Just to give you some background as to how important the work of this commission potentially is. Over the course of the last decade, more than 10,000 jobs have been created as a result of technology in the state of Alabama. Which also accounts for an annual economic impact of $13.4 billion, which is about 6.8% of Alabama's economy and a little better than 7% of Alabama's workforce. So the legislature recognized that Alabama's future investments in artificial intelligence are critical to the prosperity of this state. Because if you look at it with, you know, what is artificial intelligence? It's big data and the analysis of big data. And it's used in echo rhythms that can diagnose diseases. Industrial robots and all of the mechanization of the manufacturing industries in the state of Alabama. As well as autonomous cars and the advent of 5G and what that means. So I was appointed to the commission by Lieutenant Governor Will Ainsworth along with about 30 other people. The first meeting, the organizational meeting, was held in September. And Secretary Canfield was elected as Chair of that body. Senator Wagner is Vice Chair of that body. And they appointed five different subcommittees. The first is Education and Workforce Development, on which I serve. Second is Future and Evolving Industries, Workforce Development and Research. Third is Ethics, Privacy, and Security. The fourth is Governmental Oversight, State Regulations, and Legislative Action, on which I also serve. And then Healthcare and Medical Services. Secretary Canfield described the report that is due to Governor Ivey not later than May 1st, 2020, as providing a roadmap. And this commission is also responsible for recommending to Governor Ivey whether a permanent commission would need to be established. That's the extent of our work so far. It's really just organization. We have our second meeting, I believe, the 22nd of October. And so I'll be happy to provide the Chancellor and yourselves with additional information at that time.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
And this is still another example of things that our residents do that sometimes we don't notice. Spend a lot of time in the private service, state private activity. And I wish it were at the service. Boone, you, David, I'm there.
Good morning, Board. All of you may know this, but this is the state's 200th anniversary. Our bicentennial year, there's events going on across the state. And Chancellor Baker and the team here have had conversations. Where can we fit in? Where can the community college system come together and contribute to bicentennial events going on? So what we've come up with is what we're calling Clean Home Alabama. It's an initiative to really focus on beautification and cleanup projects across the state. We're gearing up to hopefully have a project in all 67 counties of this state. That's David, he's our point man here at the system office. He's working on this project day in and day out to briefly give us an update, give you an update on where we're at.
Uh, well, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, November 1st through 11th, mark your calendars. That's when we're going to really target the event across the state in all 67 counties. We're proud to partner with all of our colleges. Every college is doing an event out there. It may range from litter pickup, Adopt a Mile program along the highways. We have some doing rivers and streams, coastal cleanup. We've got all kinds of events going on, parks, neighborhoods, all of that. So our colleges have really stepped to the table. We're also working with Alabama People Against the Litter State. ALPALS is the acronym. Wonderful organization that we partnered with to actually help them with coastal cleanup back in September. They're going to help us in November. They've provided bags, garbage bags for us that we're giving out to all of the colleges. So we're providing them all the materials they need to make sure that they're cleaning up their neighborhoods, their districts, their parks, rivers, and streams. Because this is an opportunity for us to show that we have such a large footprint across our state. And that we're more than just educational training. But we're really part of the communities that we live and we work in. And we want to show it. So this is our opportunity to really shine. It's also an opportunity to get other folks involved and engaged that may not know what all we do in the community college system. So it's a marketing opportunity as well. So our colleges, I'm really proud of them. They've provided a point person for every college. I've been working with them hand-to-hand, so things are going very well. So we've got one website that we've created that's part of the ACCS website. So ALclean.com, you go there. I can send it to you directly, but you'll see a calendar that lists all the events that's going to be occurring across the state. And this is not just a one-time deal, November 1st to 11th. But many of our colleges have actually stepped up and been part of the Adopt a Mile program, the Adopt a String program, which is a two-year commitment through ALPALS. So we've got over half of our colleges doing that. So again, November 1st to 11th, it's going to be our time to really focus. But it's more than that. We're doing a ten-year commitment as well. So we're really proud of our colleges and all the programs out there that's coming together. And our governor's behind it. We had a proclamation signed on September the 16th. So Boone and I got our picture with the governor. So anyway, great opportunity for us to just showcase the great work that we're doing. So, anyway, great opportunity for us to just showcase the great work that we're doing in the community college system. Boone, anything you have?
Any questions? We hope that once we get more and more details on where these events are, we will certainly send out to the board, and you all can be a part of some of those. We would break the first. We have two shirts.
We are ordering two shirts. Yeah, twenty-six hundred t-shirts. We've got a heck of a deal, four fifty a t-shirt. I thought that was great. And we use the color green, so it can also be safe for the equipment as well, so if we're picking up trash and doing other things, it also works as safely.
Have we had a look and connected with other statewide organizations?
We have.
We have. So, we have a planning committee put together, and we intentionally put external organizations such as the League of Municipalities, the County Commission Association, NFIB, Small Business Association, Chamber of Commerce, BCA, and others on that committee. They've been very helpful. We've even had a couple of cities that have counties where they have decided to do projects under the umbrella as a part of this, that may be a separate project than what the college is putting together. So, that's exciting. We're getting partnerships, we're getting external commitments for this. Also, again, with the ALPALS donations, Coca-Cola is looking at donating some bottles of water, so we're working on those partnerships and part of donations that we can get for this. We've been very pleased with the outreach that we've seen.
And we've had several organizations that's going to be also doing November first to the eleventh, that's outside of what the college might be doing. So, an example of that is the robbery clubs across the state. There are several robbery clubs that are participating and doing things, and they're going to do it under the auspices of the Playroom Alabama Commission, so that's right.
Chairman, I apologize for this initial inexperience. I think it just shows that, you know, we're precise, something to observe with bicentennial is also something to be good stewards of what we've been entrusted with and to teach our younger generation going forward to be good, be good stewards of the college, shaping minds and expectations of people. Thank you. It's obvious the power that you can be, it's such a practical engagement.
And Chairman, if I can, real quick, you reminded me of something. In North Alabama, one of, and we've got projects across state that's really phenomenal, but North Alabama has worked with all their high schools, and actually, they're doing it on the same day. When you put it all together, they're doing twenty-four miles in one day. That's phenomenal, phenomenal.
Big service club, bag, all the things. We don't talk. We have some progress to take immediately following the meetings, so I'll set my timer in minutes. It's okay, everybody, we can, we can start the live session ten minutes following our adjournment here. Our next board meeting is November thirteenth in this room. I will remind the board members and the presidents that we will also follow our board meeting in November, November thirteenth, we'll be having our joint meeting luncheon with the State Board of Education. We will be having that across the street at the Art典 at the State Archives, one of the venues that we enjoy. Seeing all those in favor of the adjournments, you want to pose your adjournment?